We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Monday, January 13th. Regular council meetings, 7:00. Roll call.
Kirby, Wyner.
Michelle, Lando.
Lloyd Johnson.
Jeff Doctor.
James Clonje.
Jared Bogey.
Lloyd McCollum.
All right, and Pastor Kathy.
I have a prayer tonight. It's called a circle in prayer, but just know that the first time I read it, it kind of sounded like, "Circle me, Bert." But it's kind of like pays attention to how God notices us and puts that circle around us. So join me in prayer. Circle us, Lord. Circle us with the light of your presence right within the darkness. Enable us to be overcomers. Enable us to be victors. Enable us to be the ones that you have created us to be. Circle our families within the shelter of your outstruck arms. Protect us. Protect our decisions that we must make. Protect our homes and our families. Circle our nation with hope. Circle our desire to listen to one another. Create willingness to understand and respond. Create the need to reach out to our neighbors. And circle this world, Lord. Where there is sickness or disease, bring healing. Where there is hunger and despair, bring hope. Where there is torture and oppression, bring release. Lord of creation, Lord of salvation, circle this world with the light of your presence. Amen.
Thank you.
... from the United States of America and through the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to add to the agenda under planning and zoning. Item two. Approval of Shawn Teacuff to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion on that. And then I'll need approval to the other.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need a second.
Two seconds.
All right, all in favor?
Yep.
Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a couple of questions. Wendy, on the amended agenda, on page 24 and 25, it lists health insurance for new employees. What is that?
On the budget amendments?
Yes.
So when we did the budget, originally the preliminary budget back in August of 2018, we had two different employees, one being a single employee.
Oh.
And then we hired two other employees that have family coverage. So we had to increase our budget a little bit.
And then I do have a question under, I'm going to find it. Accounts payable. So are the accounts payable already been paid?
Not all of them. The first part of them, yes. The second part, no.
Okay.
The first part is the ones that I do at the end of. So in this case, the December 31st are done. Because they're the ones that we do at the end of the month. We do two check runs because we don't have much time. So which ones are we looking at?
The Montrose Hubert, the legal service, 1737.
You signed the contract for the city to do that, so...
To do, what is that?
That's for the contract, employment contract. That was going to be done. And they started on it.
Okay.
Didn't they date it, Russell?
It was 6:30 last month. Okay, I'm just clarifying what it was.
Yep, that's what it is.
Okay. We need approval then. Motion to approve?
We did.
We did. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. There is no open forum. Ray County Sheriff's Department.
Do you want me to come up there?
Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Deputy Young. I was actually assigned to the city last year for the morning contract. But the deputy that works afternoon today called in sick. So I'm an area car that also helps out in the city. Recently, there was a DUI in town, a couple of recent traffic stops. As in traffic, I know we've had a couple of complaints about the crossroads at the school right here, that people aren't stopping in time and the lights and everything. But we're working on that one. And then 12 and 12, the light intersection, I know that's a big one that we've had some complaints about. And we did talk to State Patrol also about enforcing that, and we're also looking into it. Any concerns or anything that you guys have?
I'm good.
Keep up the good work. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel?
Last one, the City Council meeting, the Finance Committee, and the Fire Department.
Council meetings on planning and zoning basis.
City Council, Park and Rec, and a couple of Stevens. Kevin?
Good evening, Happy New Year. We ended last year with 228 calls total, so we're up a few calls from the previous year. Surprisingly, in December, we had no calls other than our normal run-of-the-mill medical calls, so no fires, accidents, no strange stuff like that, which is very weird for December, so we're going to be very happy with that. Got off a pretty busy start at the beginning of the year. In the first six days, we were at nine calls, and thankfully, it's tapered off now a little bit, slowed down, so we're very thankful for that at this point. So any questions on the activity report? Next thing I have on the agenda is I need to have you accept the resignation of firefighter Joe Doyle, effective December 10th. He ended up leaving his, or selling his house here in town and moving to Maple Plain, which is where he grew up, so...
Make a motion to accept Joe Doyle's resignation from the Fire Department?
I'll say it.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
No vote, yes. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Next, I need a motion to accept our three new firefighters. Their effective start dates are December 17th, 2019. They are Diane Holman, Joe Theis, and Zachary Walters.
Make a motion to accept the... Motion to hire Ms. Diane Holman as a firefighter for the Montrose Fire Department.
We can do all three of them in one motion.
We decided we probably should do them separately.
That works too.
I'll say it.
Okay, I'll vote aye, Kirby.
Yes.
Lloyd, too. Motion passes three to zero.
Make a motion to hire Joe Theis, how do you say it?
Theis.
Theis?
Yep.
As a firefighter for the Montrose Fire Department?
I'll say it.
Okay, Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
I'll vote aye, motion passes three to zero.
Make a motion to hire Zachary Walters as a firefighter in the Montrose Fire Department?
I'll say it.
I'll vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Kevin, did you say their start date was?
December 17th.
Okay.
And then the last thing is just kind of an informational item. For 2020, the officers are going to be me as your fire chief for two years here now. Tom Markton will be assistant chief for two years, running the same time as I am. And then the captains, which run for one year, are Mike Markton, Tom Wynek, and Kelly Stoll. So those are going to be the officers for this year, so... Questions, anything else for me, or... All right, thank you very much.
Park and Rec. I guess that's me. We had a Park and Rec meeting last week. We are moving our escape date to February, February 8th. Wait, hold. The ice is out, so just need maybe a little bit more ice out there, we should be good. We still need to get copies of the Halloween, or not the Halloween, the Christmas decorating winners. Other than that, anyone? And we need to accept the resignation of Kirby, no, Matt Russell.
I'll say it.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Matt Russell from the Park and Rec Commission.
And your second, I mean?
I'll say it.
Okay. I'll vote aye, Kirby?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Deb?
The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was last Wednesday, January 8th, and the meeting had a public hearing that we considered zoning amendments, city code amendments, as far as administrative fines and abatement of nuisances. We're just trying to make it a little easier and giving me more tools to work with people that don't want to clean up their property when I ask them to clean it up, or take care of items that I ask them to take care of. So we had a good discussion. The Planning and Zoning Commission came up with some really good ideas, and they directed the city planner, Ryan Gritman, to come back with language that other cities have in their ordinance regarding fines and abatement of nuisances. And so that's what we'll talk about the next meeting. And then under Planner Updates, he just gave an update on Preserve, what his discussions have been with the developer that's interested in that. And then he's setting up a meeting to talk to the gentleman that bought the former Casey's building. We're going to work with him to get everything that he needs to get in his business in there in this room.
What kind of business is that going to be?
He sells Skidster parts, he wants to sell Skidster parts there. Any questions?
Okay, and then we have an interested party in joining Planning and Zoning.
Yes, gentleman, Mr. Shawn Cuff came in today at the very end of the day, 4:15, and filled out an application. He's very interested and excited to be on Planning and Zoning. And I would like to get Joyna on approving this, because if we would wait and talk to Planning and Zoning about it, you guys meet in February before Planning and Zoning. So Planning and Zoning would talk about it February 12th, then it would come back to the council in March for your approval, and he couldn't start until the meeting in March. So I will leave it up to you. It's totally up to you if you're not comfortable doing that, but I'm just asking that you consider...
Did we have a copy of this application?
Yeah, she's got one.
I can't give that to you because it's got...
So then we better wait.
We can't make it public because we didn't have time to react to everything?
I mean, I need to hire somebody we don't know nothing about.
I can, I can read it.
What about his second major?
I can read it to you.
Yeah, I was going to say, you can read it off, you just can't give off his personal information.
He has a business degree in marketing. He's self-employed for 20 years.
How long has he lived until?
Does not say. Oh, six years. I'm sorry, six years.
I don't know him personally. I see, he's very knowledgeable. I see a lot of the stuff that he, of course, you know, he's got a lot of knowledge on stuff that he puts on social media. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Shawn Cuff, actually, I think it's Shawn Teacuff, but, to Planning and Zoning.
Second.
I'll vote aye, Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd? Motion passes three to two. Sorry, two to one. Okay, city engineer, introductions.
Our new engineer is here. He's going, he and Justin are going to, Kanas, who we used to have as an engineer, are going to be working hand in hand. This is Jared, do you say Bogey, is that how you say it?
Yes.
Okay, Jared Bogey. I actually worked with Jared when I was working for the city of Big Lake, so excited to be working with him again. He does a great job, and I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, I just want to say thank you to the city for the opportunity, and as Deb mentioned, I'm Jared Bogey, I'm a principal engineer at the firm, and been in the business for approximately 20 years, so look forward to serving you.
Have you been working on the project then with Justin Laos?
Yeah, so actually, we just had a staff meeting, I believe it was January 3rd, somewhere in there. Anyway, I am relatively familiar with that project, however, Justin initiated that project previously, so he's definitely a little more knowledgeable on that than me, but we're collaborating on everything and staff, communicating with staff, both of us, so that we're all up to speed and can do the best job possible.
Thank you.
The next thing, under engineers, a resolution, and this is just a housekeeping thing. You have this resolution before, you passed this resolution before. The reason we're changing it, Jared, please comment if I'm not saying it correctly, but I think it's because it had terminology in there, like city administrator, and some other things like that, so we had to change it to clean it up a little bit, and to make it correct.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-04.
I'll say it.
All right, and I'll vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero. All right, moving on to old business, we're just going to do a brief overview of this. Back in September, we appointed council to proceed with promoting a city administrator position, and so our knowledge is that that position is no longer, they don't now want to proceed with that anymore, but we just need that for attorney's verification on that. So basically, all it is is just, at this time, we will not be proceeding with the city administrator position.
Do we have to make a motion to...
Did you want a motion?
Pass that original one back in September.
Okay. You going to make that motion?
You go ahead.
All right, I guess I would make a motion then to not proceed moving forward with the city administrator position at this time.
For a second.
Any discussion?
Did you include the request that was approved? Back in September?
Well, we don't need to, because we're just making the motion to not proceed. So... We're good?
Yep.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
I'll vote aye, motion passes three to zero. Then we will move on to accepting Ben Keel's resignation to the city council. Ben has sold his home and moved out of town, so it, what day was it?
December 30th.
December 30th. He put in his resignation to the city council, so we need to accept that.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-05, Resolution Accepting Resignation and Declaring Vacancy on the City Council.
I'll say it.
Ken, Kirby?
Yes.
I'll vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next discussion is, how do we fill his vacancy? In the past, when we filled Melissa's vacancy, when she moved out of town, we put it up for application, we advertised that the position opened. We had those that were interested fill out an application as to why, and kind of give them some information as to what it entailed. I would look at doing that again if council is willing to, wanting to do that.
Are you going to just appoint someone?
We could, but we don't know who's all interested. We need to look at all parties that are interested, and then...
And we don't have all four members here.
Yeah, we don't have a full council here. So in your package, you guys saw that there's what the application looks like. There is an application also at the desk for anybody here. In the audience, that might be interested in joining the city council. The position is open for one year. The next election is in November, so the term goes since December 31st of 2020.
So do you want to put a timeframe on how long do you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so we're taking it now if that's what council wants to do.
I'd say for, I mean, two weeks, because we interview people at the next special council meeting, we're going to make it a special one there.
So if we put, the next date would be, so it's 13th right now? Yeah, our next meeting is the 27th, so we'd have to put a deadline to what, the 20?
You do the 27th until...
You could do it until Friday...
The 24th?
The 24th.
And then start interviewing on that Monday during the workshop? That's kind of short, no, or I, I mean...
Oh, that is kind of short, or we can call a special meeting to do interviews if we have to.
Well, you could do that, or you can, I mean, you'll know that it's coming up, so if we take them until the 24th, we can copy them and have them distributed to you guys, so you have the weekend to look at them if you want. Unless you don't think that's enough time.
I think it's fine, and then if we just...
Here, here, let's do this. Let's take them until 4:30 PM on Thursday.
The 23rd.
The 23rd. And then we can prepare them for you for Friday, and we can make phone calls and try to get people here for interviewing them on Monday.
Okay, so then with that discussion, some people, because it would be hard, our workshops, then, because we currently have them at 3:30, if we move them to 7:00?
Right.
And have it here? Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to change the whole workshop from 3:30 to 7:00?
And hold it here, I think we should.
Okay, well, that one for you, Jared? Okay. Wait, can I, can I just stop for one second? Is it possible that we do it a little bit earlier so we can do our engineering? We have to have stuff done by the engineer that night, we have to have some discussion on some things, so could we do it a little bit earlier and do that first? And then start interviews at 7?
Do you want to do the meeting at 6?
Jared, how much time do you guys think we need?
I think half hour should be adequate.
Okay.
That'll be it.
Let's start it at 6, because we have a few other things on the agenda.
Okay, all right, so let's, yeah, we have to change the time first, so we'll make a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to change the city council workshop on Monday, January 27th, at 3:30 to 6:00 PM as a special council meeting on the same day.
I'll say it.
All right, I'll vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
And Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero. And then we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept applications for the vacancy council position from today, January 13th until, I guess it'd be the January 14th?
23rd.
Until January 23rd at 4:30 PM.
I'll say it.
All right, I'll vote aye, and Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. And how are we going to get the information out? Doug? You going to put that in the paper, Doug, or?
Sure. I'll have to put it in the drummer also.
Okay.
Thank you.
By the way, I don't have any drummer in your neighborhood.
No. I complain about it all the time, I do not. Are you?
No.
No.
They said to, and I can tell you what, they said, send an email to business@thedrummer.
Okay.
And give your address, and they forward that to the company, and they'll be out delivering.
Okay. We'll put it on our website.
I know, I know. They said, keep sending it every time. What? I said, we'll put it on our website.
Yes.
And Facebook.
Put a notice on the page, Jim.
Yeah, I'll have Justin do it with flyer. She does a really good job with flyers, and she can do a flyer and we'll post it in different places.
Yeah, and then once she puts it on the city page or Facebook page, then we'll share it to whatever. Okay. Proclamation for School Choice Week.
Are you agreeing?
Do you want me to read that?
Yes.
Whereas all children in the city of Montrose should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the city of Montrose recognizes the important role that an ineffective education plays in preparing all students in the Montrose community to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the Montrose community, and whereas the city of Montrose is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools, from which parents can choose for their children in addition to families who educate their children at home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas the city of Montrose has high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the needs for effective educational options. Now, therefore, the city of Montrose City Council does hereby recognize January 26th of 2020 through February 1st of 2020 as Montrose School Choice Week, and call this an observance to the attention to all our citizens. All right, and now we will move on to fee schedule.
Before you, it's ordinance 2020-01. We do this annually, the first meeting in each year. We approve the fee schedule. We did have some amendments, and I'll go through those with you. We did increase the sewer access charge and the water access charge, each $100. We do that every year. You did that by resolution at the December 9th meeting, regular city council meeting. We also increased the water rates, tier one, tier two, and tier three, and also the sewer rate, and again, you did that by resolution at the December 9th meeting. It's a good plan to incrementally increase those so that you can start building your fund for any future improvements that we need to make as far as water and sewer. And then we are proposing to increase the planning and zoning escrow. You used to have your planning type one developer escrow at $5,000, and you had your type two at $10,000. And your former city clerk decreased that in the year 2018. He decreased type one to $1,000, and he decreased type two to $2,500. And the problem that we have with that now, in that time, we have a developer who walked away from the Preserve housing development, and the cost of the consultants, which that covers, that escrow covers that, planner, the attorney, the engineer, anybody that has to look at stuff, that's all paid out of that escrow. And that developer walked away and did not even cover the cost, and we ended up giving him an invoice, and he's not going to pay it. And so we took it for $11,000. So we need to increase this escrow for future development, and then if by chance there's money, that's how the escrow works, if by chance there's money left over, which is very rare, they would get that money back. So I'm not sure what the reasoning was to decrease that, but it wasn't a good idea. So if you agree with these, those are the only changes that we made, the amendments that we made, so if you agree with that, just need a motion to approve the ordinance, and then following that, okay, go ahead.
There is one more.
Oh, yes.
Water meter purchase, we've increased that from 235 to 260, to cover the cost of the water meters that we buy. They've gone up in price, so we'll get up ours' price.
Thank you. That's why we're asking to increase this.
Yes, but we don't, I'm not asking, I'm just making a basic.
We increased the planning and zoning type one escrow $4,000 from $1,000 to $5,000, and we increased the type two escrow from $2,500 to $10,000, so it's a $7,500 increase.
Make motion to approve ordinance 2020-01.
I'll say it.
All right, Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, motion passes three to zero.
And then the following resolution is what we always do, so that we don't have to print that whole fee schedule, it's just, I'm going to print this.
Alright, Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
I'll vote aye, motion passes three to zero. Alright, next meeting is, we have a meeting here tomorrow, Tuesday, January 14th at 7 o'clock, with, um, Senator Bruce Anderson, John McDonald, and Marion O'Neal, so we invite everybody to come and join us, um, the EDA will be meeting on January 21st, very excited to see that, at noon at City Hall, um, next council workshop is Monday, the 27th, which we just changed, starting at 6 o'clock, Park and Rec is Tuesday, February 6th, next council meeting is February 10th at 7, planning and zoning then meets February 12th at 7, and city council February 24th. Are we proceeding at 6, 7, moving them to all at 7, the workshops?
Yeah, we should.
Well, I think we can discuss that when we do the mayor.
The mayor appointments? Okay. Alright, now we're gonna move on to acknowledgements, and then I'm gonna start that out, um, first one I wanna do, of course, is Ben Keel, for his time with us on city council, um, he was often appointed him, back, I don't remember, 2013, 2014, something like that, and then he was elected in and served three, this past three years with us, so wish him the best in his new home, um, Tom Winek, from Fire Department, for all his hard work putting up our skate record at Coverfield, as well as Public Works doing that, um, Matt Russell with Park and Rec, for the last three years that he put on with us, and, um, moving on to a new year, we're gonna thank our city council and our staff, um, our first year was a little, with new council was a little, you know, getting to know everybody kinda thing, and, um, little ups and downs, so I wanna thank the staff for pretty much putting up with us, um, and council too, because we all have a lot of opinions, and, so I just wanna thank everybody for everything that they do. Anybody else?
I had one, and I forgot, just had an elbow moment, so, sorry. I wanna thank the fire department for fast response, and, uh, urgency that we had a couple weeks ago.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn? I'll say it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Or adjourned?